This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Hi, good evening. This is the city council ordinance meeting for October 15th. It's 6:30. I want to welcome everybody to this meeting. I'll take a motion to open the meeting.
Summer.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you so much. So we have two items on our agenda this evening. The first one, I'm just coming here. We're going to talk about the Council on Aging, making some edits to the Council on Aging Board. And Mr. Brown reached out to me to discuss making some changes to the makeup of the board. And with that, Mr. Brown, I will turn it over to you to let us know what you're thinking, or the board of the Council on Aging is thinking in regards to this.
Okay, yeah, just to clarify, all of this has been discussed at the board level and approved at the board level. I don't know, I assume everyone received a copy of this. So just to give you some background of this, we had a board member, and really, I personally, I've been on the board for about 32 years. I personally didn't even know that this existed, this residency requirement. We had a lifelong East Hampton resident serving on the board for many years, who happened to build a new house in West Hampton, and almost immediately was asked to resign from the board. Barbara picked up on it, and she was right, that's what the ordinance said. So that's the type of talent we lost from the board, simply because, again, a lifelong East Hampton resident moves to West Hampton. One other example I can give you is that previously, a manager of the local East Hampton Savings Bank, manager for 20 years, served on several boards in East Hampton that didn't have a residency requirement. There's a new manager there now, she'd like to get involved in the community. She lives in Hadley, spends more time in East Hampton than she does in Hadley, and I'm not, we're not allowed to ask her to join this board because she doesn't live in East Hampton. And checking with Barbara, she wanted to go back, I checked with her late this afternoon. There are very, very few boards or committees in the city that have a residency requirement. And I know when talking with Connie, there was some concern about, well, what if you had developed with a nine-member board that was all non-residents? And I guess we think that's highly unlikely, number one. We have trouble getting people as it is from the city. I don't see people from North Hampton or Hadley or Amherst saying, "Let's go join the Council on Aging in East Hampton, that's a great idea, let's do that." So in talking with the director, we were, we would be happy with just saying, if the committee, ordinance committee was comfortable saying, no more than a third of the board could be outside residents, that would be three of nine, not a big deal probably. Some other changes that were highlighted there, again, I've been on the board for about 32 years. I've never ever seen the chairperson appointed by the mayor, never. I mean, we haven't had a mayor for 32 years, but, I don't think so, 32 years is that long when you think about it. But anyway, it's always been appointed by the board, so we changed that language in there. And then, the existing ordinance says that the Council on Aging may appoint clerks and other employees as it sees fit, as it may require. The Council on Aging director and/or board has never been authorized to hire employees. That goes through the city personnel department, through the mayor, whatever. So we're changing that to match, basically, the new proposal matches what's on the ground, with the exception of the residency requirement. And again, we would be satisfied even if it said, no more than one-third of the nine-member board would be non-residents, something in that effect.
Councilors have questions?
Seems reasonable to me. I guess, someone from West Hampton, can they come to the, like, use the senior center, like, or do you have to be a resident to use the senior center?
Great question. I believe you do not.
They feel like Southampton and West Hampton might have access to our services.
Southampton does have their own Council on Aging, West Hampton, I'm not sure they do. But especially when we run trips that are interesting, what we do is we won't allow non-residents to join the trip until all East Hampton residents have been taken care of and there are still openings. So we don't want to exclude East Hampton residents for the sake of non-residents, because all those communities around us have their own senior center. So we just might be happening to offer a real interesting trip that somebody wants to go on. And again, we try to, we try to appeal to East Hampton residents first for those types of things.
I'm going to tell you a few of my concerns. From the way that money through the state are filtered down to the different cities for aging services, there are a lot of state stipulations for these types of measures. And I just don't know what the state stipulation is for whether or not a board can be out of town. My concern is that to appoint people from out of town is appointing non-voters to make decisions on behalf essentially of the city. And, you know, that being city business, I don't think it is appropriate for someone from outside of our city to sit on that. And while I can appreciate having someone who's been a long-term board member and they moved out of the city, but I would think that they could still join as a non-voting participant rather than still as a member, because my concern is that that takes away the opportunity from other residents. And we have a lot of people moving into the city right now, and that would be closed out to them because the board was prioritizing people from other cities. If it was that they had expertise in aging or expertise in an industry that is primarily aging, and the board needed their expertise, I could understand that. But the example that you brought up was more that someone moved out of East Hampton, and the board really liked having them there and wants to continue. But as a general policy that would apply to the board here and forever, I can see that turning into a different, different thing over time than anyone at the current board is imagining.
Yeah, I guess I would potentially have that same concern if this residency requirement wasn't so unique to the Council on Aging. So I believe other boards, for example DPW, and I'm not sure they have the residency requirement. I'm not sure our own police and fire departments have residency requirements. You could potentially, Barbara believed that regulatory bodies might, but she was going to double-check. So for example, Planning Board, Zoning Board probably has a residency requirement, she's not sure. But DPW Board, the Park Commission, Cemetery Commission, she's not sure that they have any residency requirements whatsoever. If we were looking for something that was different than everyone else, I would totally agree with you. But we seem to be trying to make this more in conformity with everyone else. And to your point on the state level, I have no knowledge, and I guess I would have to rely on Cindy, the director, and/or Barbara to say, "Hey, wait a minute, there's a tripwire you're hitting with state." But most of the state funding is reimbursed monies to be used for seniors. It's not like we receive, you know, Cindy gets excited if she receives a $2,500 grant for something. But I understand your concern. And again, this board I serve on, EDIC, are struggling to get members. So I'm not seeing with this change an onslaught of people rushing to the mayor's office to say, "I'd like to be considered for this board opening." Right now, this particular body of nine has one opening, and that's it. I don't believe the member from, that I used the example, I don't believe he's going to rejoin the board. Probably an opportunity for him to retire, but, yeah.
Can I ask for clarification? I'm not talking about employees at senior centers. Like you brought in firefighters and other departments' employees. I wasn't saying anything about employees having to live in the city.
Right. No, I, the concern I had heard was that, what if you potentially ended up with an entire board of non-residents?
Mm-hmm.
And that's why, after talking with Connie back and forth, I threw out the suggestion of making it no more than one-third, so that would always be a majority of East Hampton residents on the board. The example I was using of police and fire is, I think the way we stand today, you could end up with an entire department who doesn't live in East Hampton.
But that's a, that's a job.
It's a job, and it's different. But I'm not sure any one of us sitting in the room would feel warm and fuzzy if those entire departments weren't East Hampton residents. I don't know that it would ever happen. Maybe there's some tripwires there too that don't allow that to happen, I don't know.
But that's apples to oranges. We're talking about how our government's city committees and boards are versus the makeup of the employees, so.
So if this could provide some clarification, so President Gomez and I, when we were looking at these changes, President Gomez, and I'll provide him the opportunity to speak if he wishes, did a, kind of researched other communities to see about their Council on Agings. They all had residency requirements also, but when you went and you looked at the Mass General Law regarding Council on Aging boards and things like that, there was no residency requirements. And correct me if I'm wrong, but that's where we kind of ran into this, "Oh, it doesn't say you can't have that." And we're doing what other cities are saying, but are we in a unique position where there are people who are working in our community, or they have kind of a strong connection to the community that are wanting to find some way of being involved, that they are somehow, through their business, connected to the Council on Aging in whatever way that that might be? Would you like to add anything to that as a sponsor to the ordinance or change?
Yes, thank you. First, thank you for bringing this forward. I agree with most of your statements and input. I will say first, the major appointing the chairperson of a committee is not unique. There's a few committees in our city, the ordinance established that. So that's not unique. I see the time change, and probably is the time to change that in the Council on Aging Board, right? But just to clarify, it's not unique. When I started having the conversation with Consulor Denham about it, I do have the same concerns. And I said, if, first I would say, to be transparent, I said, "I'm out." The only way that I would be open to post sponsor this was only adding one member being out of town, only one. Because I can really get expertise, someone who works in the city who would provide some input to this committee, I was open to it. I compromised with Consulor Denham that I would say, "Okay, let's do three." But in reality, I wouldn't want to push one for one, to be transparent. I read probably 15 ordinance from different towns and cities, and all of them requires being a member of the community, a residency. The main reason, after talking to a few people, is because what the Council on Aging provides is services for East Hampton residents. Yes, traveling around Second Hampshire District looked like some other residents in participating in some stuff at the Council on Aging, but meals, lunch, transportation is going to be only for the residents, right? That's why the boards are established by residency only. But again, as a resident of East Hampton, I'm really open to have a conversation, to open that, to allow non-residents to participate at the board. I will say again, that with a limit, because I think the services that we provide is for East Hampton residents. East Hampton residents should make that decision, right? And I agree with you, MGL, I read the MGL. MGL doesn't specify anything about residency. But at the end, if the committee decides that this is going to be changed, we're going to send it to the city solicitor, and the city solicitor will take a look, so that way we are complying with the MGL too.
So, there's a couple things I think about. I mean, as a city councillor and someone who, my area of expertise is aging, there are people in the city that have never been asked to be on the board. I'm one of them. So I definitely think there are people in East Hampton that would show an interest had they know. And I agree with you that it's not advertised in a way that would make that really well-known. But I don't think we've combed every single possibility and now said, "Okay, we couldn't find anyone." Just because of my own experience, and I'm on city council, so I think that speaks to, we need to advertise these in a different way. But I really get concerned that the city of East Hampton has no real industry for aging needs. And so what I mean by that is that we don't have a wide breadth of services and enterprises that we could really, you know what I mean? Like if we rely only on people from the city of East Hampton, unless someone works within that field and can bring it back, we're kind of drawing from our collective experience, but not with, "What would it look like if we had a new nursing home in your city?" and things like that. And so for those reasons, I could see where having someone that could bring that expertise about the field of aging into that, in the same way if there was a nutritionist who wanted to become a board member so that they could add their expertise. I guess I just would have it with the caveat that it's, that it has something to do with the field of aging, or their expertise is somehow needed over someone who would live in town.
My only thought with that is that, while the board does focus on services for senior citizens, there's other area of expertise that board members bring to the table. So for example, management's a big one, sometimes, in helping the director with a personnel issue, if you will. I know the city has that in place, but if there's progressive levels of discipline, a lot of that happens in-house before it gets to the level of the city personnel director. So a person who's been a branch manager of a bank for 20 years might bring some management experience that's very useful or helpful to the board. So there's a wide, if I look around the table today of the board members, there's a wide array of backgrounds and expertise. I wish I could name them all for you. When I was brought on the board, they decided back in 1986 that they wanted a younger person on the board for that perspective. So that's why I was brought on the board, and I was crazy enough to never get off.
Congratulations.
And in fact, that's what I've been trying to promote. Right now, everybody on the board, I'm 70 years old, I'm probably the youngest person on the board. So I'm pushing for a younger person. And I look at, I look at my contacts, and so I look at the banking industry, and I go to the branch managers of both banks. Neither one of them live in East Hampton, would be a great asset to the board from that management perspective and that vision of the youth, if you will. Because we can't just be focusing on the seniors of today, we've got to look, I mean, one of the things, you know, in our process of looking at a new senior center in East Hampton, in 2030, which is only, we're going to turn a calendar, is only five years away, 41% of the population in East Hampton is going to be older than 55. And one of the unique features we're going to have to look at is, if you're 55 years old in 2030, your normal retirement age is going to be age 70. So now we have to start looking at seniors that are still working. And our nine-to-five and no weekends isn't going to work anymore. We're going to have to be looking at providing services in the evenings and weekends. We're going to have to get way outside the box from a conventional senior center, you know, nine-to-five, nine-to-four type delivery service.
Does the, I'm thinking about the building, potentially, new Council on Aging building, things. Does the, does the board do any fundraising or anything like that in terms of?
There is a Friends arm, like the Friends of the Library, there's a Friends of the Council on Aging who do the fundraising, but we can't directly, by knowledge, yes.
And do, and this Friends of the Council on Aging, are, can they be members from outside the community?
Good question, I'm not sure. I'm not sure. They tend to, they're a little bit stagnant right now. They were much more active a few years ago. But they tended to raise money over time and buy things that the council wouldn't have to spend their city funds for. So they might buy new exercise equipment or new furnishings for the center, things like that.
Other questions?
I was going to say, by the way, I'd be fine with Omar's one, if that's what you ended up, if you were comfortable with that. I think we, if I had spoken to Cindy, we would be fine with that.
Does that, well, there's two things we can do. One, we can amend this. Two, either accept it as is, we can amend it to one, or we can say, actually, we don't want any, or we could say two, or however we wanted to amend it. So we could make that decision now, or we could also, we've got a lot of information here. Maybe that's, we want to sit on this a little bit and think about it some more, and then we can schedule another meeting to kind of come back and kind of have more of a conversation so that we're not feeling pressured right now to kind of make a decision. But I'm just curious where you all are sitting in terms of how you're feeling.
So I think, you know, it's hard for me, just knowing the history of a lot of these boards, to turn someone away who really is interested in being an active member. But, you know, maybe one of the things that we can consider is that, you know, East Hampton residents would get preference if there's multiple candidates for a spot.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if they're similarly qualified and they would be a similarly good fit, then the East Hampton resident would get preference. I think that would make sense. I'm fine if we were going to look at having it be, you know, not a third, if we were going to have one member that was allowed to be, like, I'm fine with that too. Because, I mean, the last thing I think we want to see is to have a board that isn't fully, you know, populated, which can then hinder the ability to get work done and have the business of the board executed, which could potentially hurt East Hampton residents if that's the case.
Sure.
And I think Tom's, you know, the idea of that someone could be vested and invested in East Hampton, not necessarily live here, is, I believe that to be true as well. And I don't, I don't think someone would necessarily join the board to be, you know, vindictive or, you know, try to do harm to East Hampton residents. I think someone that's looking to join a board like this is probably looking to do good. I guess that's my naive nature. But I'm also, I think that your points are valid, and, you know, but I think that there is probably some place to find some middle ground where we could, you know, help the board and with their requests, but also, like, maybe put some cartwheels on it.
Councilors, if you have more thoughts?
I did. So, let's hear them. All right. I was just thinking, so I sit on the board of East Hampton Neighbors, and that's geared towards older people. And we have this problem where I'm the only person from East Hampton on the board. So I just want to acknowledge that, that I have seen, it's not a city board, but I have seen that in East Hampton. And it does get difficult to conduct business when a lot of people, when there's only one from East Hampton. But when there's multiple from East Hampton, I think that kind of takes care of that issue a little bit. Like, I would be okay with the one person. My biggest concern, however, before we approve it is just to make sure that if there are any grant opportunities that we get closed out of because of that. And I don't think there would be, but I would hate to sign this too fast and find out after the fact.
Yeah, the only, I can check with Cindy, but the only, the big grant she gets is based on reimbursements. And that's a state-set number that she gets every year, based on the usage and, again, a number of the, the state sets. And I've never heard or seen a question on that grant that says, "Give us the addresses of your board members." But I can, I can check that with Cindy and find out.
And then my, if it's possible, I think it's important to make sure that if it is someone from out of town, that it's a neighboring town and not, like, Florida. And they're calling in each, you know, but I just want to make sure, because I could imagine, even from a child's perspective, wanting to make sure that my parents are getting the best care. And one way to ensure that would be to infiltrate into that, which I, but I could see where that would be difficult.
Sure. Jacques from Paris is calling in.
Yeah, I guess, I guess the only thing, it's hard sometimes to find neighbor and community. So the current branch manager, and I don't know that she's going to join this board. I'm not even sure we have an opening, but I think there may, there may be an applicant right now for the one opening we have. This is more for future. She happens to live in Hadley, but I'm not, I'm not trying to be dramatic when I say she spends more time in East Hampton. When she goes on to Hadley, it's, you know, feed my kids a meal and put my kids to bed, and I'm back to work the next morning. So she spends much more time in East Hampton than she does in Hadley. And I'm guessing that's the way it is with most managers of banks who work in other communities, that they spend more time in the community they're working in. And in fact, I can tell you from my experience that East Hampton Savings Bank, I'm sure most banks do, actually have requirements for employees to get involved in their communities where they work, not as much as where they live, but where they work. Because, for example, we have a branch in Hadley. That manager's expected to be involved in Hadley. "Wait, wait a minute, I live in Hadley. Sorry, you're working in East Hampton, get involved in East Hampton." So that's just, and I'm sure it's very similar for other banks too. But, yeah, I'll double-check with Cindy on any non-resident members affecting any grants.
Or maybe it could just be on a separate issue, like Massachusetts residency as a requirement?
Definitely. We could say Hampshire County.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
Other questions? Other questions? So it sounds like we're good with one. And then we're going to have these questions answered, and then we'll be able to come back and make some amendments to this. And then be forward with being able to send that back to the council.
Great.
Does that work, Tom? Perfect, awesome. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you all.
Hi Greg, thank you so much for joining us. Can you hear me, Greg?
Yep, hi, sorry.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So what we are, our next item on the agenda is, we're talking about adding East Hampton's Shrubbery Ordinance, it would be Section 8.36. Again, Director Nolan and President Gomez also worked on this. Do either of you want to provide any context to this, so that, to kind of give us some background on this?
If that's okay, I will start because I have to go to another meeting.
Oh, I can't hear you, Omar.
Can I start because I have to go to another meeting?
No, yeah, absolutely, go right ahead.
First, thank you for the past, I would say a few years, with having some multiple complaints from residents about the sidewalks and the ability of seeing when you're driving and getting out of a driveway, people walking around town. More than ever now, we want people to walk, right? And, or bike, but to walk. And I see this as one of disability issues too, people with disabilities walking around or traveling around our community and seeing vegetation being obstructed in the sidewalks. After having communication with Mr. Nedman, we came with the idea of creating an ordinance so that way they give the opportunity to DPW to address these issues if the owner of the residence are not taking any actions after a few complaints have been addressed from the DPW. So that way DPW will receive a report from the DPW how we're going to address these particular issues in the address they're being complained. That's the language presented to the councilors. I'm open to listen. Um, thus, that, uh, the language presented to, uh, the counselors, um, I'm open to listen, um, for new suggestions, for changes in the ordinance. Uh, basically, we review different ordinance from different cities. And we take what we believe it will be good for implemented in Sampton. And we, we came with this, uh, with this language.
Great. Director Knellman?
Yep, I, I don't have a lot to add. I've just, I've just really appreciate Omar, um, President Gomez working to get this, uh, language together and, um, just give us a little bit more authority to enforce these issues as they pop up. Cause they're, luckily, we don't deal with a ton of them, but there are, um, there are a few that, and it create, like, can create a safety hazard that we need to just have some more, um, some more power over.
Uh, do either of you have any questions?
Yes, I do. Um, can we start at the corner of West Street Terrace and South Street?
Actually, I have a corner that we'd like.
So, uh, no, I think this is great.
Um, you talk this way, I don't think you can hear.
Oh, can you hear me Greg? Okay, um, so I'm just wondering, uh, process wise. Uh, so if someone makes a complaint to you, um, do you, are you gonna have like a, um, a notification in place for the, the property owner to give them a chance to address it?
Yeah.
Now, and then if they don't address it, is it gonna be similar to like our snow removal ordinance where DPW has the power to trim it back? And then, um, had, did you guys think about, I mean, it's not that, probably it's not gonna be that time intensive. But did you think of like, you know, if the person wouldn't address it or refuse to address it, like they, they would be charged for the time or anything like that? Or is it just you guys would be, feel good to address it on your own?
We would, so the, the way we handle it now, we, we send a letter out. So I would keep that process going where we give people some time to, to, you know, let us know what their plan to, uh, to correct it. And then, um, from, from there, if they don't take action, then, you know, reasonable timeframe, we would have the police, the police department would then handle the enforcement of the ordinance.
Um, so I, so I guess the second part of that is, uh, you know, sometimes we have landowners in town that are absentee. Uh, and they, they don't necessarily, um, care. So I just, I just wanna make sure that we, we're, we'll have, uh, you know, something in place where if you feel like you have spent a, like a, a decent amount of time, then somehow you can recoup some of that for your department. Um, and I don't know what that looks like. Uh, maybe similar to the snow removal ordinance, um, cause I know that we have a piece, I don't think we use that piece of the ordinance ever. But it is there where if you clear someone's sidewalk, then you have, uh, a recourse to get some of the time reimbursed by the landowner. Um, anyway, I just wanna throw that out there and see, you know, so it sticks. But I do appreciate this. I think this is, uh, uh, could be helpful to our, you know, walkers and drivers, so.
I just have a quick question. Um, do you anticipate more calls from residents, not about their neighbor, but just like, for example, just now Salem was like, oh, wait a minute, there's this place on the corner of, of these two streets. Can you address that? Like, is there, is there a anticipation that you might get a lot more of those types of calls?
Um, no, I don't think so. It, it's usually when, if we, if we have a lot of rain and it's always, you know, around August and early September, when just vegetation, you know, it takes a while to get to where it's so tall that it's, um, you know, creating a hazard or blocking the sidewalk. So it's, it's usually always, they, they come in waves, like if we, like, like I was saying, if we had a lot of rain or, you know, just that later part, portion of the summer where things have really had time to grow. So, um, but we probably, it's usually the same 10 or 12 properties a year that we have to send letters out to. So there's kind of that, that part of it too. It's, uh, that we, we, I could, I'm not gonna name any right now, but I could probably name the, you know, the first six that are gonna go out next year. So.
We can add Westview Terrace and South Street to that one.
Yeah.
No, any other questions? Yeah, yeah, and, and I appreciate this. Part of the reason why I jumped on with this is, uh, you know, I walk my dogs, um, in the mornings and, and around town. And, and there are a couple of sidewalks where hedges are clearly overgrown, um, over the sidewalk. And while it provides privacy to the home, which I respect and I understand, it also creates a barrier, um, for accessibility on the sidewalk. And I oftentimes have to kind of step off the sidewalk with my dog, go into the road. Uh, you know, go to 15 feet, 20 feet past it and then to get back on. And that's, you know, that's a, that's a hazard, right? Um, and my safety is, is concerned about that. And the other thing is, there's a lot of corners, right? Where, uh, I'm not gonna give my street and cross street, but you know, e- every morning, it's, it's taking my life into our own hands as we kind of like inch out to be able to see past the trees. Um, and so those are real concerns, right? And I understand again, the desire for residents to kind of, I'll use the word beautify their property. Um, you know, make it, uh, you know, kind of a nice view of the property, et cetera. But they are creating hazards for vehicles, for pedestrians, um, for bicyclists, right? Um, and so there's some real just challenges, right? That, that are being created by this. Um, so I appreciate the time that you and, and President Gomez also put into, um, this ordinance. Um, um, so if there's no other question, are people in, would people like to make a motion to approve this? Um, are we at that point right now? Do people wanna do some more research? What are people?
No, I feel comfortable making a motion to approve this. So.
All right, so I will take a motion to approve, uh, section eight dash three six, East Hampton Shrubbery Ordinance, um, which fall, uh, well, yeah, okay. Um, which falls under chapter eight, street sidewalks and public grounds. Second. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, great, so, um, motion is approved. Um, thank you so much Greg, appreciate you being here, especially after coming from practice, so.
Yeah, no, yeah, no problem. Sorry, he's a little bit late.
Yeah, no, you, you were right on time, so, um, appreciate you. And I will, uh, take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.